...get started shortly. There is a sign sheet at the table as you first walked in. If anybody wishes to speak tonight, you can certainly sign in over there. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 2017 City of Kingston Planning Board Meeting. We'll begin the meeting tonight with a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a few general notes before I begin the introductions. Exits are on either side of the council chambers here if there's an emergency. We're going to use the stairway and exit out on the ground floor. We're not going to use the elevators. At this time, all the exits close to silence their cell phones. Banthrooms are to my left at this doorway. And if there's a need for anybody to have a conversation, there's a conference room on either side of the chambers. You could take it to those rooms. We appreciate it. And also, we folks have been pretty good about this, respecting speakers that come up to talk in the microphone. Introductions. My name is Wayne Plaid Jr. I am the chairman. We also have members Mary Jo Wilshiner, Charles Flackwell is the vice chairman, Matt Gillis, Jamie Mills, and William Tuckey. We also have the Planning Director for the City of Kingston, Suzanne K. Hill. The Assistant Planner is Kyle Baker. We also have Assistant Corporation Counsel Danielle Gartenstein. And for Building Safety Division, we have Inspector Joseph Sapper. Item number one on the agenda is not bad. Item number one is the open public speaking, which is, we allocate 15 minutes for this purpose. I see there's a number of folks who have signed up. So we are going to extend that period if need be. We can allocate up to 45 minutes for that. It doesn't necessarily have to be with anything that's on our agenda. So if there's anybody who needs to feel free to come out and talk. We have first of the name on the list is Lawrence McConlon. Is that correct? McCall. Sorry about that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to express my concerns about the Olm's House. I feel as though this is an inappropriate use of this vehicle, of this... Feel this is an inappropriate use of this building, this complex. Feel this is a drain on the, it will be a drain on the infrastructure for both the city and the county. We don't need to attract more people into the area to use our services. We need to attract people into this area who will contribute to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Patrick O'Reilly.
Hello. I'm Patrick O'Reilly. I live on 322 Clifton Avenue. Where Main Street meets Clifton Avenue. We've witnessed personally many trucks now on our street with the manhole covers open. I think they're in there trying to clean out those old pipes. We've had our toilet backed up and water came out of the toilet and onto the toilet seat and into our, into our bath, okay? That's the first part of the nightmare. I can imagine when they try to shove 8,000 gallons a day of waste down, which now you guys understand, it's a six-inch pipe. It wasn't an eight-inch pipe where everybody thought it was. It's a six-inch pipe that's going out in front of my house. It's going to be an environmental disaster for everybody on that street, okay? When that backs up. You have to be very careful at the planning board that you know exactly the implications of that, the amount of money it's going to cost the city to clean my house when that happens. It's going to be a nightmare. I hope you consider this. I hope you consider the safety of my neighbors and myself and my kids. I hope you consider this situation and vote against it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Carey.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to speak about the Olm's House project as well. This has nothing to do with RUCO and the quality and value they bring to the area. They should be employed for what they do. Thank you. That said, I believe Kingston is on an upswing. We've added 823,000 to our unassigned fund balance this year, which brings it to over 5.5 million, which is a high watermark in Kingston's history. And the fund balance, which includes the reserves, is also at a city high of over 7.4 million. The energy in this area is like I have never seen it. I believe we are on the verge of realizing our growth potential as a city. There are a lot of new business interests and business people who are starting to notice Kingston. The Olm's House has been the favorite building of mine since I was a kid. Now it's admired and some debate and controversy. Perfectly located here uptown, downtown, the thruway, the waterway, next to our town of Ulster Neighbors. The location of the Olm's House to someone with money and vision is an invitation to bring more money, I believe. If that corner is owned commercially, the sky's the limit. And it could have a huge springboard that the city so desperately needs. We do not have unlimited opportunities to make generational changes. This is one of those opportunities. Broadway Commons is one of those sites. I believe we should sell this property commercially, give the incredible corner lot the ability to flourish and bring to Kingston the kind of revenue we have been waiting for. As for the proposed project, like I said, I'm grateful for what RUCO brings to the table and I'm very happy to see that the old lace mill factory is alive again. But to move forward in something as significant and impactful as the Olm's House before we even break ground on the project on Cedar Street is simply too much too soon. Once these squares establish and running successfully, we can reevaluate exactly where our housing needs are. Let's also not forget about the taxpaying homeowners that Kingston is struggling now to keep their rental properties built. If more of these homes are left to devalue, then we add a problem to the other side of this issue as well. I respect the job you all have to do and you have the best interest in Kingston in mind. I thank you. My hope is that you consider the ultimate long-term value of the property and how important it is that we move forward with that in mind. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Mills. I reside at 61 Tammy Street, Kingston, New York, and I represent for seven on the council. I am submitting here this evening two responses to Mr. Morielly's responses to what I submitted last month. So I have two documents here that I would like to submit, as well as I continue to have concerns from taxpayers in the city of Kingston. And there's, there's a bullet point that I continue to provide to the planning board in regard to the long-term funding that will need answers so I can get back to my constituents on that. So I'm not going to read one of them, but through one copy of the planning board to look at. Thank you. And I also have one more question. This evening, I see that the Olm's House is the last thing along the agenda. Can you tell me what type of proceedings will take place for that? Because I know at last one's meeting, you'd like to know that. So the people in the audience have a heads up of what's to take place with that this evening.
This evening, we will be discussing the burnout significantly to termination. Thank you.
The next speaker is Fred Hattler.
Good evening. My name is Fred Hattler. I reside at 61 Tammy Street, Kingston, New York. I'm here tonight to talk about the infrastructure of Clifton Avenue as well as Flatbush Avenue. When this project first came to light, everything was okay. We go down Flatbush. I discussed the concerns I had being employed by the city and they found out that Flatbush Avenue ain't the way to go. They admitted it. Now, for tell us, we did go down Clifton Avenue. I was surprised to see the report that the city engineer put out admitting that it was a six-inch sewer line. I thought it was an eight. Now it worsened. Now you're putting 8,000 gallons in a six-inch line when the city requires a single-family residential house in the city that have a minimum of a four-inch sewer line. Now you're going to put 8,000 gallons in the six-inch. That is fairly to poor condition. They also stated that the pump house could handle it and that the generator was working fine. Well, I find that kind of funny. I asked a maintenance man from the City of Kingston pump house. I really don't know the gentleman's name and he really didn't know who I was. He said, "I've been here two years. I've never heard that generator run." And he's the guy that goes around and checks it every day. So there's still being some shady stuff pulled that is not coming out. But to get back to the sewer system, you're going to put that order in a six-inch poor-conditioned sewer vein. It is going to fail. There's 280 feet of it that is six-inch. They claim on their report from Flatbush to the Main Street is 600 and some feet of 500 feet. They can't even go into that eight-inch vein because it runs towards the Olm's House. So I just like you to know that I don't think you're hearing everything that should be known about the sewer system. It's in poor condition and I don't suggest that you let them put a four-sour line in a six-inch vein. Thank you very much.
My name is Matt Clantle. I live at 84 Lynch Street in the City of Kingston. And it was my Kingston I was speaking of is the Olm's House. But I really think we should focus on the name of the project. Instead of landmark place, we should consider calling it question mark place. There are so many questions about this project and I just have a few. Why was the sale of Ridge and Flatbush Avenue behind closed doors? Why did the Ulster County Economic Development Alliance agree to sell Ridge and Flatbush Avenue on a contingent basis when they were told that it was worth more rezoning? How much longer is the second you rezoned? Are we going to give equity to an... What amount? Is it worth 2 million? 3 million? If that's the case, are we giving away money? If you knew the price of gold when it were $2,000 tomorrow, would you sell it today? It doesn't make any sense. Why isn't that sewer system wasn't a problem nowadays? Why isn't that anytime we have any sort of development in the city, it's issued a tax break that begins any sort of benefit to the remainder? Why isn't that initially it wasn't a problem to have homeless and mentally ill with the seniors, but nowadays? Why isn't that anytime there's major development in our city and the residents that are impacted speak out, they're ostracized or called a NIMBY or in this case accused of discrimination against homeless or those in need? My message is simple. It's about time that our government start putting the interest of the people first. And not the problem. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Vince Crew. I live at 214 West Chestnut Street. And I'm here to talk against a proposed use. I've spoken at other hearings that I don't think is the best use. I agree with Mr. Carey that this is a great location and there are other potential uses that could generate more profit tax revenue, more sales tax revenue, just be a better overall use. I agree with Mr. Clantle. So I have a number of things, but I think I'm going to limit my discussion to a little amplification on lack of transparency. So my question really, I guess boils down to who will own the Olm's House? Will it be RUCO? I would have thought RUCO. Most of you probably would say RUCO. And maybe they will. Or maybe they'll transfer and flip it to a for-profit LLC, sell the historic tax credits for 80 or 90 cents on the dollar. Maybe transfer the pilot benefits to wealthy individuals that aren't doing anything for the city or the county. All I can ask is that as part of the process, the planning board and the county council ask that question. I can look at past history. So I'm going to take one RUCO project and kind of walk through this real quickly. Who owns the lace mill? Anybody think it's RUCO? Okay. Based on the recent assessment rolls that just came out, the lace mill is owned by Lace Mill Limited Partnership. Okay, that could be a RUCO affiliate. Maybe not. Maybe it's much wealthier individuals that, that put. I can't tell. But I do see that in RUCO's 2015 Federal Form 990 Schedule R, related organizations and unrelated partnerships. The Lace Mill Limited Partnership is not, not shown. So then, and that's really my question. So who's going to own the Olm's House? And what is RUCO? So as I started looking at this 990, I was a CBA, so I can read some of this stuff, maybe not as well as I should, but... So I looked at it and I was shocked to see that RUCO is a nonprofit. It's a 501(c) nonprofit. But it earned $446,000 in 2013, $350,000 in 2014, and $1.4 million in 2015. So what I remember from my accounting days is that nonprofits can make money, no problem. But at some point, a nonprofit takes on attributes of for-profit and it walks like a dog, quacks like a duck, looks like a duck. Sometimes it is a duck. So at some point, it might be treated as a for-profit. So if I were on the planning board of the county council, I'd like to get a little better feel. Why isn't that RUCO is allowed to make that kind of money? How are they doing that? Maybe it's important, maybe it isn't. But it just seems, to follow up on Matt's point about lack of transparency, that there's a little bit of a lack of transparency around this transaction. And I, I think there are much better uses for the Olm's House than what's being told.
Good evening. I'm Erin Terry. I live right around the corner from the Olm's House. Beautiful building, very historical value. And right around the corner from it is all our low-income housing projects. Done most several different variations. And now we're going to bring it up, put a few houses right up around the corner. And then around the corner down East Chestnut Street by the gas, we have more low-income housing projects. So allowing this zoning change for RUCO to come in, to take over a whole area and designate it as Low Housing Hill, because that's exactly what's going to happen. And I can't imagine that our community is creating such low-income housing, though I see them advertising all over the place. I see them giving away money to people to buy housing just so they can get foreclosed because the tax rate is going up because they're constantly asking for product programs and we have to pick up the difference. And what RUCO started out to be was smaller homes in nice neighborhoods where they would become, the people who lived in these homes became a part of the neighborhood and became a part of society. But now what we're doing is we're doing the large homes, like the Lace Curtain Mills building, which by the way environmentally that you guys are supposed to take care of. The floors got to be re-done because there was lead found in the floors after it was all supposedly finished. Why is that? Why weren't they taking care of it before one person moved in? Because you guys didn't do your job or you didn't make sure that it wasn't taken care of. I think this group has become very bogus. I think they're in for the money. If you don't believe me, you go check with Albany State. There's 18% of the gross project cost goes back to them if they bring it on time. In fact, that place was not even finished yet, completely finished, and they got $2.970 in their pocket. And what did they do with it? You guys gave them a pilot program? Why? They're making bonus money. They gave grant money to do their environmental studies and their planning and everything. And now we're going just to take a beautiful neighborhood and turn it completely into low-income housing. You're decimating all the other properties. And I'm starting to say, when you guys start bringing bustles of tourists who put them in front of these buildings and people want to take their pictures because it's a tourist attraction, that's when you're making money. These guys aren't making money for us. They don't care about us. They're, they're, what guys is here for 11 years and came from somewhere else and collecting paychecks? Then I don't see them giving out their money. I don't care if they ride a vols. I don't care what they do. I work hard for my money. The city assessed and just raised everybody's assessment by a little bit. But next couple of weeks, we're going to be voting on the school budget. That's going up. So on top of our assessment, our school budget going up. And then when you guys do your budget next year, we're going to have to pay an increase in that because I hear the mayor's behind the ball and he's looking at anywhere grassed forth. When I ran for mayor, I talked about doing this infrastructure. I get a letter from the city saying, "Don't flush flushable wipes down your toilet. You're clogging our system." I'm in that neighborhood and you're going to let a project like this and they're not even going to fix the streets and they're getting all this bonus money and they care about the poor? Well, who's caring about the people that are paying the taxes? They're asking for a tax break. I'm not. I'm working. I keep working and working and working and I get nothing. And you guys don't even make sure there's no lead at the floor. Their environmental studies suck. They don't do their job. They don't care about the poor people. They're just making money for the poor people. And I don't turn my back on the poor people. I hand out money. I don't see them handing out their money. I see them handing out your money. And I don't think we should be going any further with this because there's been plenty of realistic brokers that I've talked to that have better projects for this area than a RUCO. RUCO is ruining our city. Thank you.
I didn't think I'd be allowed to address you tonight because as a matter of addressing you arrived, you're not on the agenda. I probably shouldn't be on the agenda, but it is not. The Bob Dylan concert, and there are two of them now, down at the work yard on North Street. That's about as wide as that table. This was the planning board washed the hands of the seats. Turned and says, "Well, we have a, a, they presented a plan and it's still good." Sure, well, I presented a plan for my fence and it's still good. So I put 15 by 15 foot baby burn in the backyard. And they keep stretching it and stretching it. I don't know where the plan's done ending. First, it was going to be food trucks and empty buckets. Anyone remember? Then it was, well, we have to cook something while we got our liquor license with these guys over there. Now it's one concert. No, just a minute. It's two concerts. You know, wait, it's five concerts. Where does this stop? Are we going to have casino down there or go home dancing? Or is it going to be low-income housing? I have no idea what's going to happen next. Apparently, once that original planning thing was through by the end of the month, it goes on into infinity. I think that you really ought to consider taking back your approval for everything, including Schumacher, and starting out all over again and make them have some transparency as to what they're planning on doing down there, what safety measures they have taken, what the environmental impact they have had. And well, my science says it all. And North Street is a fine old historic street and I don't see riots of 1,000 people now happening. So have a lovely evening and see you in the Dylan concert.
Thank you, ladies.
The next speaker is Darlene Kelly.
My apologies. Rookie mistake. I thought I was signing it. I know you're saying it.
No problem. And tomorrow?
That's all the folks who have signed. Is there anybody else who wants to speak at this time? Anybody from Mary Ann Parker? Just kidding. You know that.
That's okay. I wasn't going to say.
Oh, are you?
You know how I feel about.
I know.
But my name's Mary Ann Parker.
Breathe the mic right down to you.
My name is Mary Ann Parker. I proudly live in Midtown Kingston at 14 Melvin Dear Street. I have all my life and I enjoy living in Kingston. RUCO is not here for a good reason as far as I'm concerned. And they all know that what my reasons are. Sewer is my main concern because I don't care what happens. Shit happens for a reason and I'm going to keep using that expression because the bottom line is when it's all said and done, alls we have to do is look at what happened to our Washington Avenue. If you people haven't learned anything from Wilbur when I was in office, from Washington Avenue, then you deserve what's coming at you. Because the bottom line is the sewer and the infrastructure are the beginning, okay? Then you build a foundation and you go outward from there. But if you don't do the underground, nightmare's going to happen. In hell will freeze over and I should watch my wording. I know. But I'm here mainly because, you know, the more I read about RUCO and what they're doing and all the places they're doing all these projects in, I have one question and that is my father worked for Local 17, which is a good union. I want to know if RUCO has to have a PLA agreement and if we hire union workers globally. I wanna know if RUBCO has to have a PLA agreement and if we hire union workers globally? Because the thing is, if everybody has these projects, there's more projects. I wanna put food on the tables of the people who reside in the city of Kingston. And that means Local Seventeen is one of the unions out there. The men who work for Local Seventeen are construction workers, yes. But there's also other unions in this city. And I think that when the planning board looks into this whole thing and decides what projects will be of government, what projects will need help, I think you wanna make them do a PLA. You know why? Because if they have to do a PLA, then they have to hire union workers and pay a fair salary. RUBCO, according to the gentleman spoke a little while ago, is making lots of money. I think it would be a good thing if we had union workers, local union workers, to do all those projects for RUBCO and make RUBCO pay them a fair wage so that we can afford to provide for the people who live in the city of Kingston and their families. And I thank you for listening. And I do hope that you consider putting PLA on all four of the projects and make them pay the right wage for the workers and have the workers be local workers within North City. Thank you.
Okay, nobody else? Okay, this time we're gonna close the public speaking portion. Moving on to item number two, adoption of the April tenth, twenty seventeen. Twenty-four minutes and notes from a site visit to one twenty-two Clinton Avenue, which took place on April twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes and the notes from that site visit. Any additions or questions on that? Okay, this time we make a motion that we approve item number two. This is the adoption of the April tenth, twenty seventeen. Twenty-four minutes and the notes from the site visit conducted on April twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. Second. Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Let the record show that Jamie Mills is going to be sitting here for Robert Jacobson, who has not attended the meeting tonight. Moving on to a public hearings now. Item number three, eighty-five and eighty-seven Beale Street and seventy West Union Street. Special permit renewal to operate a bed and breakfast. Section block lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash two dash twenty and twenty-one. And fifty-six point forty-three dash two dash ten. Secret determination zone RT, Heritage Area Commission. It's also in the Ronda Historic District. Ward eight, Tamara Eland is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number three? Okay, closing the public hearing on item number three. I think you were Tamara. Is that pronounced that way?
Tamara.
Tamara Eland?
Ellen.
Ellen. Good, both of them. All right, welcome.
Thank you so much.
There you go, thanks. All right. How are things down there?
Absolutely wonderful.
Any changes?
Changes in since we...
Anything to the operation from the last time?
No, we're just super busy.
Good, good. Yeah, and this is an annual, right, so? Okay. Anything pop up with staff? Okay. We'll stick to everything's order here. Everybody agreed? Yes, under secret, it's a type-two action. So no further review of the board is required with regards to that. I'll make a motion that we approve item number three for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. Have a second on that. Second by Jamie Mills. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. See you next year.
Thank you.
Got a car alarm going off outside, that's all. Item number four, still in the public hearings. Six eighty-five Broadway. Special permit renewal for auto sales and repairs. Section block lot is fifty-six point ninety-two dash three dash twenty-one. Secret determination zone C two. It's an heritage area. Ward four, Dago A Marathas is the applicant owner. Item, sir. Let the record show that Mr. Marathas is here. All right, the original permit was issued in May of two thousand four. And in two thousand five, it was expanded to include auto sales. And the most recent renewal was in April of twenty fifteen for a period of two years. Anything changed through the operation there? No? Looks good? Okay, ten-four. No changes. Site visit looks good per the planning department? Anybody have any questions? Okay. Need to discuss a term. The last one was for two years. Would they refer to another two-year term on that? Okay. Okay, seems good. Under secret, it's also a type-two action. So no further review of the board is required for that. So at this time, we make a motion that we approve item number four for a period of two years with all original conditions carried forward. Have a second on that? Second by Mary Jo Wilshire. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Take care. Item number five, three thirty-six Brooklyn. Special permit renewal to operate an automotive repair facility. Section block lot is fifty-six point twenty-six dash eleven dash twelve. Secret determination zone C two. It's a heritage area. Wausau Ward nine, Robert Carradine is the applicant owner. Still the public hearings. Anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five? Oh, somebody took the mic?
No, I didn't. I got jumped on.
Let the record show that all the man Deborah Brown is at the mic. Silt to be microphone.
I don't have a problem. Bob, I've been there for years. There's been no complaints from any residents. And he's like, he's spent there a great time.
Okay, thank you.
You can just leave that.
Okay, yeah. Two years, good. Okay, secret. It's a type-two action. No further review of the board is required at this time. Planning office has no issues with this property, no issues with building safety. So at this time, we'll make a motion that we approve item number five for a period of two years with all original conditions carried forward. Have a second on that? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, item number six, one twenty-two Clinton Avenue. Special permit to operate a rooming section boarding house with six bedrooms. Has a couple of twelve residents. Section block lot is fifty-six point ninety-two dash four dash forty-eight. Secret determination zone R two to ward four. Reverend Darlene Kelly is the applicant. Clinton Avenue Methodist Church is the owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number six? Closing the public hearing on item number six. Welcome Reverend Kelly, everyone.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for affording us the opportunity to conduct the site visit in April. It was an I O D experience and we did it at a time when your soup kitchen was up and running. We got to test the how your warming center operates when it doesn't become that type of the area again. And also how it looks in the area that you're applying for right now.
I appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
So I think we took care of a lot of the issues, a lot of the questions from board members last meeting, I believe, right? There's a lot of questions up ahead. And at the end, it was decided that we needed to conduct that site visit just to tie ourselves in. And I think that happened. Just to reiterate, one of the speakers who spoke at that meeting owns a couple of properties for the area, in the area around that. Didn't say he was against the project, didn't say he was for it, but it does get approved. He just likes to have it up and down. Stayed on top to make sure that what you said is gonna happen is happening there. So I think that's gonna be important if we do move forward with this, so.
You'll be more than that. You know where to find me.
Oh, yeah, I doubt it, you know. So, does anybody have any questions?
The right says that you have to, the people that live there have to have twenty-four hour access to the kitchen. Are you gonna leave that open so that they can have that access?
There'll be staff there twenty-four hours. So hopefully, we won't have folks running into the kitchen on their own. But probably we'll have food available if somebody is, you know, having a hard time and needs a snack or something. But I can't imagine that we're gonna allow residents to do their own cooking at three A.M.
Well, that's it. I agree with you. But the rules are a lot in there.
Somebody's leaving a paper. That's right, we'll make sure we do. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, this is a special permit and a term reserve. Every year, this is why it's only requirements every year has to come back the regular, okay? We got listed things there. Item is a secret referred.
Representatives. How is the representation of the site?
Well, we compost as much as we can because we have such a large amount of food waste from the soup kitchen. So we've got a really good composting thing going on. And we have a contract with Canney Waste. We haven't had a great deal of space to do dumpster. But that might be what we do give off. It's too expensive, I don't have.
I think the church does. Hopefully, they do have an knock box there. I think there's a knock box.
Do you have a knock box currently on the church?
No, actually.
If there's not a knock box, they ask for a message for the after-hours access by emergency services. All right, we'll talk to them after. We'll get an application process for that. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, under secret, it's an unlisted action. So the determination of warrants and defendants will need to be rendered. Sue has handed me a short criminal assessment form, which is in order. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve. We have a second. Second by Chuck Galaco. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. I know that I'm looking through the... The list of notes here that Sue was prepared for us. I know that you have the same notes given to you too. So there's a lot of regulations that we got here too. And you've already been handed those, so... So what else we have? We're gonna tie them all together. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number six for a period of one year with Board Policy six. Installation of the knock box and... That is a motion, second. Second by Chuck Galaco. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, item number seven. Is twenty-two West Pierpont Street and seventy-two Worth Street. It's a lot of mine revision of the lands of Sierra and Toronte. The St. Mark's A and B Church. Section block lot is fifty-six point thirty-five dash two dash thirty-eight and fifty-six point thirty-five dash two dash thirty-seven. Zone RT, Ronda Historic District. Ward nine, Sierra and Toronte is the applicant. Sierra and Toronte and St. Mark's A and B Church are the owners. Is there anybody besides the owner or applicant wishing to speak on item number seven?
Yes.
Deborah Brown? Big knock.
Last meeting, I had questions. What exactly is this? Is this like a parsonage attached to the church or what? I'm trying to picture it.
It's on West Pierpont Street, there's a church on the corner.
It's that modular, okay?
No, it's the stone church on the corner of West Pierpont and Worth Street.
Okay, okay.
It's like a stone. Okay. Then if you go down Worth Street, there's a house next to that.
Okay.
He is taking a piece of the church's land to expand his farming for his multi-annual...
Okay, but then this is, then down further, it's like third par.
Yes, he has an office space which he wanted to turn into apartment. He, I told him about seven o'clock and he said he's not here yet. So if you wanna hold and then bring him back.
Yes, he asked me some questions while he was going. I was hoping to ask him because he wasn't here last month either.
I talked to him today, so he's not here.
Okay.
Was there somebody in there that asked you?
He was a par, like he's, so he's using, using it to get a parking lot. So he needs code that you have to have excellent spots for.
Right.
Okay, and so off-screen parking? I just would like to ask.
We're gonna hold off on this right now.
And, um, I think it would be really helpful to the public to know what these projects look like and what, what you're actually thinking is the, the work of opposing that I'm thinking. So it, it would be helpful that you have that information before we come before you so we can sort of have more informed questions. Um, also, I, as I was looking up the, um, the company, Kingston Land, is it Waterfront LLC? Um, it looked like it had only been incorporated in two thousand and sixteen and, and it's in Far Rockaway in Brooklyn. Yes. And it looked like it was a housing project. The address that was given there, so it, it just made me question, like, what kind of company it is, so. Um, those are just questions I hope you could ask.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for item number nine? Hi.
Hi, I'm Hillary Murphy, uh, twenty-sixth and Beale Street in Kingston. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, sort of, you know, go with what Barbara was just saying. Um, I came into the planning office today and took a look at the site and, um, and I just had a couple of questions. It's a little awkward because I kind of really wanted to hear what your questions were before I brought any questions up myself because you all have a lot more experience in looking at these plans. But because of the way that, um, this board operates, having the, um, public hearing before we get to sort of see a presentation from the applicant, um, we kind of have to present our questions in this kind of undeformed manner. So I'll just present my questions and hope that you might consider asking them or addressing them in some way. Um, I, this parcel right now is a completely green, uh, kind of like meadow-y space, um, right on East Strand. And if you drive down East Strand in any kind of regular rainstorm, you'll see that it gets completely flooded to the point where you're almost kind of hydroflaming your way home, especially if you're coming from a coffee, um, and pass the waste water treatment plant. Um, so it does get flooded and I noticed that this is a pretty large building, it's thirty thousand square feet, as reported, um, by the Daily Freeman. Um, and so I'm just curious if there's, if you're going to ask about stormwater runoff and, you know, capturing in that way. Um, there also seems to be some sort of accessory parking, um, potential, um, that would fall not contiguous to the property, but within, so underneath the, um, the nine W overpass, there's parking already. And then this would be kind of like an extra parking lot built up into what looks like almost close to where the green line comes down and meets East Strand and then it kind of works its way back out to the rail trail out to the park. So I'm just curious, is that a property currently owned by a applicant? Is this another situation where we have parking as a primary use on a property that's not, that's not contiguous to the property usage? Um, is that even an issue? I know it's not the RTU, which is my personal passion, but it's a different zone. So I'm just curious if this is going to be another situation where we have an application that's looking for, um, parking as primary use. I know that that's a zone of, and that's under consideration by the Harvard Council right now and has been posed by many people in pretty much all. So those are my questions and I'm curious to hear what your questions are and what applicant has to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Hi.
Hi.
Tanya Garland, one to Ward Street. I just got to say it looks a little suburban. Um, and can we do anything about the, the highly usable parking in such a historic area, um, right at the trailhead for the roadway, across from the Panisium? It seems like there should be some high standards for what something looks like there. To me, that looks like something out of suburbia. The limited information that we're given available, I don't know if we have any elevations, but from the way it's laid out, it looks like suburbia. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on item number nine. Uh, Joe, are you here? Are you the architect for this project? Why don't you guys sit by? Both the records show that Joe Irwitz and Dennis Larrios are here. Hey, didn't have a seat in a while. Good.